Thank you. This is the planning board meeting, May 4th, 2021. And I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:05. We will start by running through the agenda, see if there's anything to be added. Do we have any additions to the agenda before we start? Hearing none, let's go ahead. We're going to go through the minutes. We will, we have a hearing scheduled that was continued from two weeks ago and it will be continued again tonight. We do have a preliminary site plan review for 24, 24 North Main. And the Hogans are here to discuss that with us. We'll briefly mention, there's only articles that we have coming up at town meeting. And then we have updates on ongoing and potential development projects, especially the 40B projects that we have going at the moment. And then we'll deal with other business, open to citizen comments, we'll report on meetings with other boards. We'll hear from the town planner. So hearing no additions, let's get started. The minutes I reviewed and made some edits, sent them back, Gino sent them out. Are there any additional edits to the minutes? If there are.
Mary Ann, I had one.
Let's show the minutes then, can you share the screen, Gina?
Yes.
It's more of a clarification, it may be something that I misunderstood. Well, I'm looking on page two. And it's in the paragraph that starts attorney Mueller. And about two thirds of the way down the sentence, the application submitted was incomplete in that it didn't show or describe the east portion removed. I had to read that a few times because I found it confusing because we were referring to the east portion as the part with the picket fence and the new driveway that came in. And the west portion was where the big chunk was taken, but it was like, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong stuff, but I think that that was referring to the east portion of the west portion.
Actually, you, you caught a typo.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we, I'm looking for the exact word, but it should have been west portion.
And because I, because I, I thought that we were looking for more detail about that part, the part that's on the west side of the house.
You're exactly, you're exactly, you're exactly right. Oh, um, with the west, let's see.
But it says, sorry.
With the west driveway serving the home and the east driveway with the picket fence. Is that part okay?
Yeah, I think so. And then it says a few sentences, that says from the main driveway to the east. Meaning I think, you know, from the west side going east is where the 31 feet was removed. So maybe that's where the east portion was referring to, but I found it confusing.
Right. Would it be better to say from the main driveway toward the east?
It could be that I just mixed up, I didn't look at the scan that was wrapped around onto the back. And so I don't, I was just typing at the time and I didn't go back and check the actual scan itself. Gina, which, which, in the application itself, I just remembered the attorney saying that, that he talked about one piece of it, but not the other piece. And because it was like written on the back page and then when it scanned, it didn't come in, was that the, the west driveway cut or the east driveway cut?
That was the west driveway cut.
Oh, it was, okay.
West driveway cut is the main driveway.
Right, correct.
So what that sentence meant was from the main driveway, which is the west driveway, traveling back toward the east. That's where 31 feet of stone wall was removed.
But we could say the west portion of the wall removed, or the west, or the west driveway, or the main driveway. I mean, it's incorrect as written, so.
We could say from the west driveway, or east of the, you could say, east of the, of the west driveway, I guess.
To me, the most critical sentence is that sentence, the application submitted, because that's the one that describes what the planning board wishes to see. So if we put in that sentence, you know, describe the 31 feet between, if that's what it is, and I think that is what we were looking for is those.
That's correct.
Oh, wait. Gina, the, the version that you emailed out and the version that I'm looking at have a different word there, one says east and one says west.
You just changed that, you just changed it.
Oh, you just, okay, thank you.
Oh, I didn't see you change it, that was.
Yeah, so, so west works there to say the west portion of the wall.
I think that works, but.
Yes, okay, all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, sharp eyes, Elizabeth, thank you. Are there any other corrections? Or inconsistencies or lack of clarity? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes and approve the minutes of April, whatever it was.
20th.
Second. Oh, motion to approve the minutes as amended, and nice job, Elizabeth. John Higley's trying to get back in, so he's gonna jump on his laptop.
Okay, I don't, I think you had a chance to make a comment on minutes. No. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Going down the little postage stamp pictures, Chris?
Hi.
Addie?
Hi.
John?
I'm gonna abstain because I dropped off for the last few minutes.
Oh, would, would you like us to go back?
If, if we're talking about the minutes, I have no, no comments, so I'm okay with them. That's, but I didn't hear the motion or anything, so.
Oh, the, oh, I'm sorry, the, the motion was to approve the minutes as amended.
So, I.
Will?
I.
And I'm an I, so the minutes are approved, thanks. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the hearing on Meadowbrook Acres definitive subdivision plan. It is, we have to open now, I guess, don't we? So I'm opening the hearing.
No, we can't do it until 7:30.
Right, do I have to open it and close it? Oh, at 7:30, oh yeah, sorry, okay. So then we can move on to 24 North Main. And we have guests that are the new or potential owners, you can tell me.
Potential, yeah.
Potential, okay.
Almost.
All right. Would, you want to introduce yourself and tell us?
Sure.
How you came to Shreveport and what.
Sure, yeah, my name's Sean Hogan and it's my wife Kelly. So we're a young family, we have two sons, the most recent is two months old. So we're not getting a lot of sleep, so excuse us if you look exhausted, we are. But, you know, we've come out to Shreveport over the past couple of years, we get the pond pass, we go hiking on the trails, see all frosty heritage, you know, we like it out there. And we plan to move out there in the near future and have our kids raised out there. But I've also been planning to relocate my financial advisory practice out of Brookline. So I've been in Brookline for about 10 or 11 years. And it's just become, you know, congested and we want, we want the office to be really close to where we ultimately live. Because it'd be difficult to go back and forth. And so we happened to notice the building was for sale, although it's not really visibly posted as such. But we, we found that it was and decided that it would be a nice opportunity to change the building's use a little bit. Use the first floor for my office space and kind of wall off that entryway where the staircase is. I'm not sure if you've been in there or not, but, and we'd like to continue renting the rooms on the second floor to, presently, there's a couple of health practitioners in there. We're not trying to, you know, kick them out or anything, if they wanted to continue there, they'd certainly be welcome to, you know, rent those spaces. We could also, you know, change it up to therapists or other type of, you know, professionals working up there. And we understand the third floor is, is storage only. So in the process of deciding if this could work for us and, you know, going through all the hoops with my firm, I work at a company called Edward Jones, so they had to approve the site and there was a whole lot of due diligence. And so part of that process led us to the building jacket information. And I was, I unearthed the letter from Gino actually dated March 31st, 2004. And it was originally dated to, directed to Paul and Marner Orchid, I guess, who were redeveloping the space at the time to the, to the spa. And so the issue that I found was that the planning board had voted to require that that utility pole that splits the driveway be relocated. And then the requirements for that were stated to run with the land. And so the deadline for that was October 31st, 2006, that was the completion deadline for that relocation. So it's been about 15 years and so it wasn't really clear to us if that was still an active requirement or if that had sort of been waived, it didn't appear to be recorded. And so we were just looking for clarity and hopefully some relief on that. We weren't sure what the issue was, if, I mean, I know it was on their original plan, but was it an aesthetic issue? Was it a safety issue? Was it a zoning issue? And depending on which, you know, reason, there's possibly some other things that could be done, you know, widening the space, putting a little fence around the pole or reflectors. But, you know, relocating that pole is, I do have some telecommunications engineering experience. I mean, that's a $40,000 to $80,000 job, depending on certain factors. We've, we've gone out and surveyed it, I mean, I have pictures, I can screen share with you guys, although I'm sure you've seen it. It's a main line run, I mean, it's Route 27 and it's, it's loaded with stuff. And it would cost a fortune and it would be disruptive and you'd have police details in the road for months and people getting knocked out of service. So I guess the question is, you know, would you be willing to, you know, provide us some relief with either like a letter relieving us or successor owners of that obligation referencing the letter or possibly a recordable reversal of the decision? That's kind of what we're hoping. And that's why we're here, I mean, that's, we really need that to happen, otherwise I don't think it would work for us. If we wouldn't be able to buy the building, rehab it, because it needs work, it's in, there's a lot of issues with it. And then to move the pole on top of it would just be a bridge too far financially.
Right, well, that was a very clear presentation of the problem. Thank you. Gina, you know a little bit of the history of this, do you have anything to add to that?
I do. Trying to, since it, it really goes back like 20 years. Prior to the orchids, there was an attorney who was interested in purchasing the building. It had been vacant for quite a while. It was the former rectory for St. Teresa's Church. And it had been vacant for a number, before, before I started working here. And the attorney was going to make it his law office and he presented a preliminary site plan. And he offered to move the pole, it was part of his plan to move the pole. But then it never went, he never went forward with the building. So then the orchids came along and proposed the day spa. And so the planning board at the time said, great, but we want you to move the pole. And they said at first, sure, no problem. Then they contacted, I don't know, Verizon or whoever they contacted about moving it. And they came back and said, no, we can't move the pole, it's enormously expensive. And at the time, I believe they said it, it was like $20,000. So the, the 40 to 80,000 now kind of fits, fits in, I think. And then when the planning board voted and I wrote that letter, what was that letter, 2003 or 2004? They, they gave a deadline of 2006 with the idea being that the business would get, it would allow time for the business to get established. And then once it, you know, was successful, then it would have the funds to move the pole. But I think that it was kind of a, if I can characterize it accurately, it was kind of a, a half-hearted requirement. I, I don't think the board at the time ever felt that they would crack down, you know, when the deadline passed and. But anyway, regardless of that, it didn't get moved. And 15 years have passed, additional years have passed. And I'm not aware of any incidents, safety incidents there. So I think that's where it stands.
Right. Yeah, I have never heard of anything, in fact, I had never noticed that that pole was in the middle of that driveway. And I've pulled in and out of there, so.
It sure is, I can assure you, it's definitely in the middle, it's, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, the last 15 years have taught us that it's, it's not really a safety issue. It's more a convenience or aesthetic issue, really. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, I mean, I, I can say right up front, I'm inclined to let the pole stay. And to make the business, you know, the entrance more attractive and convenient, you might want to consider widening the driveway on either side if you can, I'm not sure how easy that would be, but.
We have a little mock-up drawing actually showing exactly that, that we made, where we could widen the grass, you know, two to three feet on each side and possibly just to make it look more like it's supposed to be there. We could put a little sort of matching white fence triangle around it with reflectors so that it really pops and sticks out. If safety is the concern, we could really get it loaded up with reflectors. But we could make it look a little prettier, but, you know, they're not too much. I mean, it is a telephone pole and it is loaded with stuff, so it's never gonna look pretty, but.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want anyone running into it, but they're, they're not likely to. Are there any other comments from the board?
Yes, I just, I know that we're working on that sidewalk as part of the complete streets. And so there's a sidewalk that's going to be in the next month or two being worked on right in front of that building. And I, I can't remember the exact plan, I don't know, Gina, if you have it handy. There was some talk of trying to narrow driveway so that they, we didn't have such huge entrances and exits along North Main. I don't know if that really, widening the driveway would kind of be counter to that goal.
The driveway. I don't think the, the plan, I don't think there's really, it's not really practical to narrow that one, I can see.
Right.
Along the way, that could be narrowed, but not that one, in part because of the pole.
Right.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest it.
I mean. A question about that?
Chris has had his hand up.
Um, good evening. My initial feeling was I would never let a pole come in the way of a business coming into town. The more I thought about it, and I tend to support agreements of past boards. And then I've driven past the property several times, looked at the pole, and I, and I drive past it like most of us, four or five times a day. I don't, I don't think that moving the pole should be a deal killer. If there was something that could be done to make it, and again, it's hard. I personally hate wires anywhere, you drive through parts of Route 16 down to Wellesley and it looks marvelous. And the reason it looks marvelous is because it buried all their lines. So I don't know if moving one pole would satisfy my hatred of all the power lines. So my inclination would be, I wouldn't want to see the pole stop the purchase of this business from going in here.
Yes, John?
Yeah, I think, Chris, if I understand you right, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. I think if they bury the telephone line, the, the power lines and utility lines on Main Street, I think that would be agreeable. But I, I also, I think Addie Mays is right that, just make sure, either do nothing or make sure that whatever's done does not interfere with the complete streets plans, the sidewalk plans. And I, I also am not a big fan of widening for those reasons. I think as a pedestrian, when you're in a driveway, you're sort of in a danger zone. So you want to minimize that as much as possible. If there's no, if there's no safety reasons, I'd like to hear from, you know, public safety, traffic safety or, or, or the police at least to say, say that it's, that our, our, our recollection is correct. That I don't recall any traffic accident related to that way it is. And it's been in use for a long time that way, so I'm okay leaving it. If you can dress it up a little, great, but I don't, if you, if there's no safety reason, then I'd leave that up to the business owner and not require it.
I would agree with leaving it up to the business owner. I think it, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we require it. It might, you know, I took a good look at it the other day and I noticed this, the edges of that driveway on, on both sides are not very well defined. There, they sort of, you know, blend off into a bit of dirt. And so if the, if the purchaser decides to make that driveway, you know, just better defined, so it's easier to see where to go in, where to come out, that would be great if it could be done without widening the driveway. But a foot or so on each side, I think, might make it a little more comfortable to drive a car into, especially an SUV or something.
So I think we're, I'm kind of on the same page as most of you, that as far as the moving of the pole that I'm comfortable with, it wasn't done in 2006, so at this point, it's kind of a mute issue. And yeah, I think, you know, encouraging good businesses in town is a nice thing.
Yeah, that's great. Gina, are there any other issues in the site plan review that we need to make a decision on?
Well, as far as I know, and they can speak for themselves, but I don't believe any exterior changes to the site are being planned.
Correct, yeah, and so at this point right now, we actually have a Board of Health meeting tomorrow night where we've submitted drawings for the first floor interior redesign. As far as the exterior, we're not planning on changing anything, just repairs. So there's some nicks and dings in the roof that need to be fixed and, you know, some aesthetic things, you know, foundational sort of just, you know, filling in some holes where, you know, bugs and stuff are getting in and water. But nothing, we don't want to change the way the building looks. I mean, that's part of the reason we like the building so much is it's old, it's an antique building, it's in a great spot. People drive by it all the time, it's got ample parking, no parking in Brookline for 11 years. To have a parking lot like that is, is unbelievable. So yeah, we love the building, we just want to, I mean, quite frankly, I feel that a little bit of neglect has occurred. I realized it's been closed, I mean, COVID's been a factor there. So we would like to have it, you know, popping and looking like, sure, and looking good. But we're not talking about any structural changes or additions or anything along those lines.
We are however, going to replace the wheelchair ramp.
Yeah, oh yes.
So we will, we have to make ADA compliant.
It's, it's not currently, and there's also no handicap parking space. So we would need to, we will be adding handicap parking space, that wheelchair ramp needs to go, it's not compliant, so that would be.
It's also falling apart.
Right. Yep.
That was gonna be my, my next comment about the parking, because it does need a handicap space designated and lined. And it probably would help to line all the spaces. And based on the square footage of the building, I believe it's around a little, maybe a little over 1,100 square feet per floor, for first and second floor. So that would, for office space, that would generate a requirement of 10 spaces. And I think that easily fits in that, in that, in that lot.
In terms of just some other changes, I mean, based on our, you know, building inspection and surveys, you know, there's some spa equipment up there that, I mean, we would eventually likely demo, like there's some steam rooms that I think are a bit past their prime. And, you know, we don't anticipate anywhere near the water usage, you know, that was previously occurring. You know, just to give you an idea, I mean, right now, my, my office in Brookline is myself, my assistant, and a client who comes in and possibly a second advisor, so you're talking three people max. And lately, most of the meetings have been virtual and I don't know if it's ever gonna go back to the way it was before. And I'm sure it will eventually, but it's gonna be different and I anticipate less in-person meetings.
How about lighting, any, any planned changes to the exterior lighting?
Not at this time, I mean, there would need to be signage. And I know there's some requirements about how that sign can be lit or not lit. But it would be similar to what's there now, you know, out front, street facing, lit for some hours of darkness if possible or allowed, but, you know, I don't want the lights on all night, you know, either.
Right, and you're aware of the signage rules, that's a zone, a zoning board of appeals issue, I think.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure you sound like you're totally willing to comply with whatever signage.
Yeah, whatever the rule is.
Whatever the rule is, and, you know, it would be, not required, but it would be good to kind of look around at the styles of signs through town center and, and pick a style that you think sit, fits with a, a small New England town like this one. Overall, I think your plan is a, is a great one. And I think it's really encouraging that someone's gonna make very good use of that building and keep it alive as a historic structure, it is in the historic district, as you know. So, good, welcome.
I just had one question, sorry, just re-looking at that initial site plan review. The, the concept of using the, so kind of continuing with spa services upstairs, I know Gina had mentioned it might be problems with ADA. Is that our area that we need to say something or is that Board of Health?
It's actually the building inspector. But, but it's helpful just to, to note it that, just in general, if, if the second floor is to be accessible to the public, if it's just the private offices, I think that's, that's okay. But if it's open to the public, I think it needs to be ADA accessible, which would likely mean an elevator could be a huge, a huge issue.
Gina, would that be an issue for someone who say wanted to open a little psychotherapy office or a kind of one-on-one sort of aromatherapy or whatever? Where you make appointments and go to meet the person, does that still need to be ADA accessible? Because that's not really open to the public, it's only open to the person with an appointment.
That's probably a question that are answered by the building inspector.
Okay, well, that, it might be.
I was gonna say, there, I mean, there is people in there now renting, there's a massage therapist renting one room and then there's a.
So, so that might be the clue that it's okay. So, so that might be the clue that it's okay.
But they're coming in through the first floor.
Right.
Having access to the wheelchair ramp where otherwise it would be blocked off the first floor, but the wheelchair ramp to the second floor. They could only come in through the front.
Right.
Right.
But with the same idea that, I mean, if there was no way to get to the second floor, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter.
Okay.
I was going to add one thing, Mary Ann, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
I, first of all, welcome. And it's so exciting to have people coming in to spruce up a, a building that needs it. To, in regards to the pole, I'm in complete agreement with everyone. And the only concern I would have would be, and I know, I do this just from experience from driving that parking lot, is like which side of the pole to go on. And it's just a suggestion might be if you have to get a painter out there to do the handicap space. I don't know if this goes along with Sherburne's aesthetics, but just like arrows on the, on the pavement of going in, going out, it might be useful just to avoid any accidents.
Yeah, I agree. We actually had that in our mock-up design, just to, because we've done it too, you know, driving in. Which, which one do you take, right?
Okay, are there any other issues? Anyone from the public want to weigh in? Okay, this is a preliminary site plan review. I don't see the need to re-review this. Gina, what's the procedure here? Do we take a vote to approve this site plan and approve the not moving the pole?
Yes, that would be it. And then, and then I'll write up a letter with whatever recommendations or whatever decision you, you make. And it's, you know, it's kind of informal since it's not a formal decision type thing. So I would just write a letter, like I, kind of like I did, I guess, about the pole 16 or 18 years ago.
A follow-up letter, and that would go to, that would go in our files, but also to the zoning board of appeals? Or where else does that have to go? Obviously, Mr. Hogan and Mrs. Hogan, whenever.
Yes, yes. And, and yeah, I would send copies to the building inspectors, EBA.
All right. Well, let's take a vote then. Can I have a motion to approve the plan as described with the pole in place?
I'll make that motion. So moved.
Second? All second. All in favor? Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Eddie May?
Aye.
Will?
And that's, don't eat that.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, so you're all set. This is great news, I think. You'll be very welcome here and I hope you find a nice place to live in Sherburne.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but otherwise feel free to, to sign off.
We'll get back to the kids.
Yeah, we have screaming kids in the other room, so thanks.
Maybe get to sleep, okay.
Bye.
Bye. Okay, good. Oh, I like articles like that. It's just so nice. Okay, regarding the two zoning articles that we have at town meeting, they're both printed up now in the, in the warrants that went to everybody in town. And the advisory voted unanimously on both articles. Mary Ann, Steph, yes?
Do you want to do the public hearing, 7:30 public hearing first?
Oh, thank you. You were watching the clock and I wasn't. At 7:30, we have to open a public hearing for Meadowbrook Acres definitive subdivision plan. We're opening it and we're closing it. It'll be continued to May 18th. Can I have a motion to continue the hearing to May 18th?
Motion to continue this hearing for Meadowbrook Commons until May 18th.
I will second that.
At what time?
Shall we say 7:30 again?
Or 7:15? Or do we anticipate actually talking about it?
Possibly, but I believe we last time continued the 11 Farm Road to May 18th at 7:30. So maybe 7:45. Not that 11 Farm Road would only take 15 minutes, but just to, in case, in case they continue again, you don't have to wait, you know, you don't want to have to wait too long.
Or are we, do we anticipate, is there, is it pretty certain we'd be continuing again? I mean, should we just do 7:15 and keep moving it down the road or?
No, 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 because they, well, the deadline for a decision is roughly the end of May. So that, that meeting would be the last meeting before that. I've already informed Pulte that this could, this would be the last continuation unless they, unless they grant an extension.
And they would have to propose the extension. Is that correct, Gina?
Yes.
Okay, so let's make it 7:45. And I expect the 11 Farm Road hearing is going to take more than 15 minutes. But, you know, Pulte would just have to wait a bit then, I guess. That's the way it works. All right, so let's have a vote in favor of continuing the hearing.
I mean, sorry, since we know 11 Farm's not going to be 15 minutes, should we do 8 o'clock for Pulte? I mean, it's probably going to be more than 30 minutes, but just to give it a little bit, make it more sense.
No, that's.
That's fine. The main reason I thought I hesitated a bit on that was because if you remember, Mr. Muller, Attorney Muller, said that he thought they could be ready in about 30 days. So just in case they're not ready and that one gets.
Okay, right. All right. So stick with your plan.
Okay, so let's take a vote. Where were we on continuing the Meadowbrook Acres subdivision plan? Do I have, we have a.
A motion to continue to 7:45 on the 18th.
On the 18th. Do I have a second for 7:45?
I seconded it.
Okay, all in favor, John?
Already, do we already have a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I just repeated it.
Yeah, I guess it was repeated. That's true. I didn't remember what the time of the first motion was. Short-term memory. John? Eddie?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it is continued. Okay. These zoning articles for town meeting are past advisory with flying colors. But we, at least I do have to redo my slides for town meeting because they are asking for really simple slides with not so much text. So I want to bounce this off of you. You, you may recall, or you may not recall, that my first and last slides were text, the current bylaw, and then the new bylaw, the amendment to the bylaw. And I didn't read through them all because I didn't want to take the time. I just summarized them. But I'm wondering if that would, those slides would work as bullet points. That is, can I share my screen for a sec? I'm looking. Here we go.
I can certainly recall a lot of practice on past town meeting presentations to simplify it and standardize the format and a lot of practice. So I anticipate nothing less.
Yep. Well, that's my way, as you know. I will have this down pat. But the, the question is, rather than show the whole bylaw text, I tried to make a, a summary slide. Actually, the first slide would be only this top part, not the revised bylaw, just the current bylaw with these three bullet points. And the question is, do you think that conveys what we need to convey?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think people are going to have their, you know, the warrant in, in front of them. Visually, if there's a way to do a side-by-side comparison or something, or maybe if you're just trying to, just as you say, just have the, the first slide on the current and the second revised, but maybe a third slide is the comparison or something.
Right. Actually, the way I did it before seemed to work really well. The first slide was just the current. And then we explained what the, what the unintended consequence was. Then I go through the pictures of, of that lot. These incident will be in PowerPoint, dark blue, light letters, you know, all that. But then the last slide could be some variation on this. Maybe I should have the amendment as a separate slide.
Is it confusing to say advisory amendment?
Yes, it is.
I mean, it's.
Because I thought advisory was going to call it their amendment, that they called it planning board amendment.
Yeah, I mean, it's planning board article and they recommended something, but it's.
Yeah, so.
Mary Ann, the way you have your pictures, is it possible to put the text? I think you might have done this, this kind of the current bylaw with the picture and then a revised bylaw with the picture on the same slide or? Or put these two in like columns so that you can see them side by side rather than one above the other?
Yeah, I might try that. It just makes the slide a lot busier. I'll, I'll do it both ways.
Yeah, I forget what the Neutro rule about font size is.
Yeah, that, that's a lot of, if I put the two side by side, that's too many words according to the Neutro rule on one slide. And also according to, I was telling Gina, I see that the town meeting video, audio people have adopted my, my rules and my template. Last time I had this dark blue background, light lettering, and they thought, oh, that's not going to work. So they, they retyped all my slides from scratch on a white background in black letters. And then this year, the instructions come from the AV people. Everyone do a dark blue back. I won't mention that.
Change, change isn't easy.
I'm with you, Mary Ann, as a teacher. You got to go dark. I'm with you.
That's right. Us, but I do like the idea of kind of having a picture. Although the pictures are such that it's hard to get it on the slide with that much text. I don't know. It worked at advisory. So maybe I'll just stick with the formula that worked.
Have you been told that you have to change or is it just a general message has come out to reduce text? Because I thought your slides at advisory were pretty good.
Well, it's just, no, it's just a general advisory to the presenters to keep the wording really minimal, the simple slides. And I, I get the point. I mean, it is better to have just the key points in bullets because they have the text in front of them if they want to read it. And this will actually make it easier to present, to tell you the truth. So anyway, I just thought I'd run that past you. And, you know, I'll do colors and boxes and all that.
To me, it seems like a pretty efficient use of words.
You, you could take out probably 10 letters. Instead of saying on existing public road, just say existing public road.
Oh, oh, yeah, right.
There's, there's ways to, but, but on the whole thing, you're just going to reduce it by maybe 10. And then, so. Let's see. So vehicular access only internal subdivision road or some, I don't know, I'm pushing it, I guess, but. Like to preserve the scenic quality of the existing road, you could say preserve the scenic quality of existing road.
Yeah, yeah, we could do.
I don't know if it's worth it, but that's a way to take a few letters out.
Yeah, a couple of things. I don't want to take off too much so that people can misread it. Anyway, the, the general concept of doing it this way, I think, I'm glad to hear it seems to work with you guys. So I'd be happy to run through it with anybody. Oh, I will be running, running through it anyway next Monday at the, the pre-town meeting. And hopefully, most, they're hoping that most of the discussion of these articles will be done at the pre-town meeting.
Great.
Yeah, I think the one that's going to take a lot of time is the artificial turf. And, you know, there's two full pages in it. Yeah, well, we'll see what happens. Okay. Okay, thanks. And Gina, do you want to say anything about your presentation?
Well, just that Mary and I talked about it yesterday and thought it might be helpful not to have a, any kind of big presentation, but just to have a single slide with a map that shows the easement and, and the, and the parking area and the trailer. Just more, more to promote it than to explain the, the article.
Yeah, I think that would be, because, you know, people who don't, who haven't been around the block with that may not even know exactly where it is. So it would be good to show that. And I'm wondering, you know, if it, because it raises questions in people, people's mind about, well, what about the trail, the rail bed itself up to that trail connection? It might be good just to add that, you know, we're seeking, seeking grant money to finish that.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you. Updates on ongoing and potential development projects. Yeah, there have been some important meetings since last time we met. The ZBA had a sidewalk on May 23rd. Gina was there. I was there. Chris was there. Gina, do you have any comments? Or Chris, on that sidewalk? Did you learn anything new?
Well, I think the biggest takeaway from that was that all the way up at the site by the house, looking beyond the, the large parking area where the wastewater treatment leaching facility is supposed to go, there was standing water there and there was skepticism expressed about whether that may or may not be a wetland or whether it really, there really could be a leaching facility there. Beyond that, it was more just, just to get an idea of how close the buildings would be, all the facilities would be to the abutters. You could, you know, clearly see that, you know, especially, it's not, the leaves are not out yet, so you could see clearly the proximity to the abutters. Other than that, I don't think there was much.
No, I had the same impression that you did, Gina, on that far west part of the land beyond the, the large house, the existing house. That looked like kind of a dish to me, like almost a bowl. So to make a leach field out of that, they would have to build it up tremendously. And I also noticed the kind of lay of the land for the leach aid and also stormwater. It does run down into the abutters. It probably does right now, but it will continue. Chris, you were there. Did you have any impressions?
I'm the same two thoughts that Gina said regarding above where they want to put in their leaching field. There was clearly standing water there several days. Um, there was clearly standing water there several days after a rain. Um, and also again, the proximity to some of the properties on Hunting Lane. It, it appeared, being there, it looked much closer than it did on the plans to me.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay, so the, uh, the, uh, the ZBA discussion of that is, uh, ongoing. It was, the last meeting was the 22nd of April. And I'm, I did catch when their next meeting on the Hunting Lane property.
This Thursday night, May 6th.
Ah. Okay, great.
Uh, G, Gino, I had a question about that particular meeting at the sidewalk themselves, which itself, which I attended as a groundwater protection person. Um, the developer stated that the May 6th, the ZBA hearing would be focused on water and sewer issues. I was wondering if anyone is aware if that's actually the case or if that topic is standing or, because every question that was asked during the sidewalk about water and sewer, they basically said, well, there's another engineering firm doing the water and sewer and we can't answer those questions.
That, that's correct. The, the, the second peer review consultant from Nobus, Jim Vernon, um, will have his report imminently, maybe tomorrow, but be ready, it would definitely be ready for the, uh, that May 6th meeting.
And that's for water sewer?
Yes, but the peer review, the other, the regular peer reviewer also, um, provided a report today, um, which I sent out to everybody, uh, regarding the stormwater. Uh, he was responding to the comments in response to his initial, it, to his initial, uh, review. And, uh, you know, he listed the, the issues that have been resolved and, and there are a few more comments that could be resolved with conditions. And then he still had like three, I think it was three items that are open and still need to be resolved somehow.
Yeah, I, I found that, you know, I did have time to read through that this afternoon, uh, after you sent it and uh, that really, that really is worth reading. And I was reading it from the point of view of stormwater, which is, uh, normally a planning board issue. And in this case, obviously it's a 40B, so other boards aren't involved, but I do think it would be good, especially once we get that third, that last peer review in, to, uh, put together a planning board position letter, if you like, on the stormwater issues. Because there are some, I think, that are, uh, not resolved according to, uh, the PSC, the, the Towns Peer Reviewer. And it's hard to see how they could be resolved, actually. Uh, so we're looking forward to seeing more about that. Um, the, incidentally, the, um, the response is from a, a term called Allen and Major. And that is the firm hired by the developer, right? A and M in this. And then there's, uh, the peer review that we're still waiting for is, uh, what's the name of that outfit again, Gina?
Nobus.
Nobus. Uh, is that also hired by the town?
Yeah, we picked them, but you, you pay for it by funds from the developer.
All right, so it is a town.
Yes.
And peer reviewer, and I guess you chose that as the second peer review. Was there a reason that we needed another peer review beyond the, the PSC review?
Because this, this one, this is, this is a hydrogeologist who specializes in wells and mainly wells, but also to a lesser extent, the, uh, the leaching facility.
All right, that, uh, Mr. Houston, he's the hydrogeologist.
No, he's the civil engineer. It's, uh, Jim Vernon from Nobus who is the hydrogeologist.
I see, okay. I wasn't sure who you were referring to there. So, uh, yes, I recall that the, uh, developer was uh, arguing that, that Houston's not really a hydrogeologist. So uh, Jim, uh, what's his name again? Sorry, I can't give his name in my.
Jim Vernon.
Vernon, yeah.
Vernon, like Mount Vernon.
Yeah, from Nobus. Okay.
And by the way, the, the, it was also, the developer also used a different engineer to design the, the well and wastewater treatment plant. So, so there was just, you know, two different specialties involved.
Different engineer designing the wastewater treatment and well from the stormwater or?
Yes.
One engineer for wastewater and one engineer for well?
Correct.
I mean, one question that, uh, I've, I've been bothering Gino about is that, uh, both in the meetings and in these documents, they refer to, uh, hooking up to the, uh, stormwater drainage system on Hunting Lane and the town center stormwater drainage system. And I realized reading that, that I have no idea what the construction of those systems are or where their outfall is. And, uh, Sean, Sean Colleen certainly knows. But, uh, I certainly don't know. And I think it would be good to know, uh, where those are and what their capacity is. In fact, the, uh, PSC reviewer, Tom Houston, uh, brought that up in one of his comments. You know, what is the capacity of the system that they plan to dump stormwater into?
And beyond the capacity, he noted that this, the structures in Hunting Lane are, uh, there, there are catch basin to catch basin construction, which is not, not a good engineering practice by any means. That's supposed to be catch basins to manhole. And.
The manhole has to lead to under, underground conduits or pipes of some kind.
Well, yes, but, um, but one catch basin should not connect to another catch basin. They should all be connected to manholes and then, you know, then discharged, uh, wherever it might go.
That's the, the way the town system is at the moment because it's been around, I mean, it's had, it's been around that way for so long that before they had different codes. So what are the, what is the precedent for developers tying into a town's stormwater? Is that a normal practice or is that usually that they're required to come up with their own?
They're usually required to hold stormwater on site. However, it's not always possible. So there are some extenuating circumstances where a town, a town in general, not specifically Sherburne, would, would allow a connection. And u- under our stormwater bylaw, that is, that would require approval from, from the DPW director.
Would that also require a, an approval from the state, Gina? Because, you know, they, they're going to say that, uh, they, they don't have to abide by local bylaws. Uh, but our, our stormwater bylaws are in line with state and federal bylaws. So, you know, who, to whom do we refer?
Well, I, I think there's a difference between a bylaw, which is a regulatory issue versus, um, permission to tie into a, a s- a system that's owned by the town. That's kind of a, an ownership and management issue versus a bylaw. So, um, so I think Sean would have the authority to not allow that connection, especially if we, there's documentation from a peer reviewer that it's not meeting, um, you know, stormwater standards.
Right.
But i- as another example, on Coolidge Crossing, they also are tying in, well, they, they're not exactly tying in, but they originally were tying into the stormwater system on Coolidge Street, but now they've re- redesigned to keep everything on site except for a short distance of the entrance driveway where the grade is just such that the water can't, can't go, you know, uphill. So it's going to run into the town system, but it's just a small amount.
So does the town have a system of underground, uh, drainage pipes for storm?
Yes.
Underneath all the roads?
Well, not all of them, but yes.
Okay. Yes, I see Steph nodding. I guess the groundwater protection committee is up on this.
Well, that, that's not related to groundwater protection. I just remember seeing it when, when you, when we were doing the, um, the Jameson Field perk testing. I remember seeing drainage facilities underground there and I mean, the stormwater has to go somewhere. So in all towns everywhere, there's a system of drainage that goes to some waterway.
Right.
Yeah, sometimes it's not pipes in the ground, it's just a trench on the side of the road.
Ditches, yeah.
Which is now the mo- the modern way to do it.
It's old fashioned and modern.
Yeah.
That's right. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not aware of real detention basins down there along, you know, along the tracks, but maybe that's where they are. That's the low point of town center. Anyway. Uh, so, uh, you know, that's still coming up and that's, that's going to be ongoing. The peer reviewer, Mr. Houston, did point out early on that uh, stormwater standards cannot be waived. So, uh, I think that's, that's a fallback position for the ZBA that I hope the ZBA would take. Or the, I guess the ZBA doesn't have the authority to waive either. Is that correct?
Well, they're state, they're state sta- standard, so, uh, any project has to comply with those.
Right. Okay, well.
Do you know, do you know, would the stormwater system be in the town GIS? Is that something that you could just look at and kind of see the pipes on a map and where they might go to?
Uh, a lot of them are because in the ones that are in the, the MS4 area have been mapped. But outside the MS4 area, they have not, I think some of them might, might, might have been mapped, but m- maybe not to the, um, but not added to the GIS system. But Hunting Lane is outside the MS4 area.
But if they're piping their stormwater into the MS4 area, which is what they say they may do, then it becomes an MS4 issue, right?
Yeah, yes. It would.
Okay. All right. So, uh, yeah, it continued to May 6th, that's this week on Thursday. Okay, then there also has been a meeting, um, on the 28th last week on Coolidge Crossing. And that's, uh, continued, uh, to May twel- uh, April 28th to May 23rd?
12.
May 12th. Oh, yeah, May 12th. I misread my writing. Okay. Um, I brought up the pedestrian routes again. Uh, and they sort of made, you know, I, I just requested that the bypass around the gate between the two, uh, developments on Coolidge Street, uh, be made, uh, wheelchair or stroller compatible, which I thought was just a minor thing, but they'd say, oh, okay. But they came back with this big argument about why it couldn't be ADA and how people could go over Peters Hill. And it was really not quite what I expected. I'm, so I'm going to just maybe write a note to ZBA to clarify what we're really asking for there because, uh, there's no pedestrian exit from those, either of those developments. Except if you can easily walk from the Coolidge Crossing to the Polley Development and then out Gray Lane or Gray Road to Meadowbrook.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just ADA, it's also, um, strollers or a mom's got a little kid with a bike and they want to go to a, a quieter street to practice riding. I mean, I get that they're two separate developments, but they're, you know, they are still part of the Sherburne neighborhood and we, you know, it's nice to be able to have places where people can walk and see neighbors.
Absolutely. And I thought that, you know, their, their objection to that was sort of strange because they already agreed to put a bypass around that gate. All we were asking was that bypass be solid enough and wide enough for, uh, strollers and wheelchairs. So it's a, it's a very small ask. Anyway, I'll make sure that gets, stays on the radar screen until they're clear that they'll actually do it.
Can I add something, Marian?
Sure.
There was some, a lot of, I went to that meeting too, and there was a lot of talk about pavement and concerns around quantity of pavement. So I wonder if coming with, I, because I agree with you, I didn't think they had a really compelling response to why they couldn't put that in, but earlier in the meeting, people have been talking about all these efforts to reduce the amount of blacktop. And I wonder if we came with our request with some sort of creative, you know, we're not adding, um, non-porous surface. Is there a way to make it, um, I don't know, crushed gravel or something?
Uh, yeah, it might be. I mean, I'm not sure what's, uh, I guess crush, crushed stone is, if it's well tapped down and maintained, can be okay for wheelchairs. Uh, but at the end of a, I mean, it would be a very small extension of an already paved large driveway system, so. Anyway. Okay. Are there any other comments on, um, either of those developments or others? Hearing none, let's pass on to other business. Uh, are there any citizen comments, uh, on items that you don't see on the agenda? Okay, meetings with other boards? Has anyone been to meetings with other boards? I'm sure we have. Start with Steph.
Sure, um. Yeah, so, so we haven't met as a board, but we did go to the sidewalk and I just thought it might be of general interest. I'm going to report this to the groundwater protection board tomorrow as, or committee as well tomorrow. But, um, while I was on the sidewalk, I had the same observation as Gina about that, um, leach field just being like standing water and it had not rained in 24 hours. So either the, the wa- the rain couldn't drain or that was the groundwater level at that moment. Um, there, in the back corner, there was like, like Daryl, like walked towards the very back corner of the lot and then she's, she caught my attention when she said, hey, Michael, come over here. And I sort of started walking over there too. And all of a sudden, the developer said, okay, time to go, folks. And it was just this really sort of like, you are visitors on our property, it's time to leave. And Daryl snapped a bunch of pictures of what looked like it could be like a stream, um, back there. It just really sketchy. It was, it had a really bad sort of feel to it, um, at the end there. Um, and I did talk to Daryl about, since it's a public water supply, what are the implications and how does, how can Sherburne be involved in the well testing and the, and the perk testing and stuff like that that would have to be done. And she said that because it's, um, DEP that it would be led by the state, but Sherburne can and will request to be present, um, during the testing and talk to the, the EP agents. Um, so, um, uh, and then the, the only ask I was going to have was, Gina, if that, um, hydrogeologist report comes in anytime, can you just forward it right away to Brian and you feel free to include Tom and myself if that's convenient, but, um, you know, our, our committee is meeting tomorrow. And so just the opportunity to be able to even just skim it before we meet. And especially because I think a number, some of us may want to attend the ZBA hearing on water and sewer as well. So just to have any opportunity to understand what's in that second peer review report would be really valuable, um, as soon as it's available.
I, I will definitely forward it as soon as I get it. And, but just to clarify, th- it's not going to be a formal report at this stage. It's going to be like an email report. And then, um, it can be formalized as the next step if, if the ZBA so desires.
Okay. But like a summary of findings of?
Exactly.
Data collection and findings?
Yes.
Would be helpful.
Gina, has the groundwater protection committee, uh, uh, received the, this latest, uh, peer review report from Tom Houston of PSC?
No, but it's, it's been posted on the town website, as will the, the one that comes in tomorrow too.
Okay, great. So Steph, you might alert the committee to watch for that.
I will.
But I'll, I'll forward it, uh, well, could, um.
Yeah.
If you would like to forward the one that already went out today, you know, feel, feel, obviously feel free to, to do that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if, if I see stuff coming, just as, as a, as a procedural question. If I see stuff coming from Gino that is, or, or anyone on the planning board that is of interest to the groundwater protection committee, can I just freely forward it? Or I, I sort of haven't been because things seem to be taking different, you know, their own channels, but I, but when I saw that, I thought of forwarding it to the groundwater protection committee. Is that something that I can do with reports? but when I saw that, I thought of forwarding it to the groundwater protection committee. Is that something that I can do with reports or I don't want to blur the lines between my
Public information. And it's on the website, so it doesn't hurt anything to
Okay.
to send it. If it's more convenient for them to get it that way, that's probably a good thing.
Okay.
Okay, great. Are there any reports from other boards or committees? John?
It's not from another committee, but on the Metro West Regional Transit Authority, there, we have one not, not well used stop on Kendall. And with Coolidge Development, there's hope of getting a bus stop there. And I don't know where that stands. But MWRTA has got two pilot studies or actually one pilot study and two that are just starting up. To, I forget the proper term, but it's basically to make it on call, kind of like Uber and Lyft. But, but a, a regional transit authority to basically compete or to enhance their service. And that has opportunity for Sherburne. It's just a little bit, you have to be pretty close to Kendall in order for it to work right now. But it's something to keep an eye on. It's, it's been piloted in Wellesley and I think it's expanding to Natick and Whalen. In the last meeting, they were talking about, they're expecting, they're not the first ones to do this. There are lots and lots of other regional transit authorities are doing the same kind of thing. So it's an app on your phone, works just like Uber and you can call and they'll tell you when you can get picked up and things like that. There's, they have, it's public transportation. Their specialty or one of their strong points is they, they have different sized buses and vans particularly useful for handicap access. They have not been charging fares during the pandemic and they're talking about charging, making a charge for this local Uber-like service and, and it's under discussion to talk about when they start to bring fares back. But so it's, it just, it's another potential real asset to Sherburne to get public transportation and it's expanding to other towns where they have lots and lots of stops. So it's, it's in the future. They also made a comment that their program for vaccinating their, their employees and then riders. They, they, as of the last meeting, they had some act, some excess and they sent an email offering it to the general public in the, in the region. So I'll forward that to the selectman's office and also the select board office and also COA and the disabilities committee so that, just to try to get the word out. I don't know if, if they have excess now, but they did it the last meeting. So.
What would be this, this site? What's the location?
Oh yeah, they set up a site again initially for their employees and their rider, riders. And then and now it's, it's in Westboro and they have a, I forget the location, but it's set up and running. Very successful. They've had fantastic results in terms of successfully protecting employees and, and riders. So.
That's good to know because a couple, three of the major state-run sites are shutting down. So
Yeah.
There are more.
On a different subject, the, the presentation with the results of the Jameson Field testing of the preliminary feasibility. That's with everything else going on, it's, we've not had that, but the, the project was completed except for it's a planning board project with that project to be completed, supposed to include a presentation. So I'd like to get that on our agenda to start to come up with a, get in contact with them. And I think it was to be presented to the select board.
All right. You know, we haven't seen a real presentation on that either actually. So maybe it should be a joint.
Oh yeah, definitely. Sure. It's our, it's our project and it's, but I think that, I think in the scope of work, it included a presentation, a presentation to the town. And I think we said the select board does, obviously we'd be there.
I was asking Gino about this because ultimately what we need are the data from that study that we, that was a planning board project. And a, a broader view of Jameson Field, the capacity of the field in a more total way, taking into account all the other water that's being pumped into that field from other sources. And Gino corrected me, I was saying, where is that? And Gino corrected me saying that that was not part of the study that the planning board ordered. But how do we get to that stage? Because until we have the, that information in a sort of a comprehensive overview, it's hard to think ahead about the use or not use of that field.
Yeah, I've never met a consultant that wasn't willing to incorporate into their summary, more work needs to be done.
Yes, that's what it is. So what is, what is, is there a plan for that more work needs to be done?
That next step.
Is that in our ball? Is that in our court?
I don't know if that's, if that's really a planning board thing or not. But the next, the next, that step to determine the actual capacity of accepting discharge of water is a, is a much bigger study than the initial one that just did perk test. You know, it's, it's, I don't know, 50 or $100,000 study.
Yeah, that was made clear when we did, we signed up these guys. That was, it was very clear. This is a preliminary feasibility.
Right. And that was the intent to not go too far into it and then, and for not. So this, this first step just gave us a hint that yes, it has some capacity to, you know, it does, it has very good soils. We know that now at least, but how, to what extent it can, what's the capacity? We don't have that yet.
I mean, yeah, but I mean, I think we've had this discussion before. It's beginning to ring bells. But, you know, ultimately to make any kind of decisions about a system for town center, that's the kind of information we'll need. So maybe we'll take it up another time and.
Well, I, I anticipate that the results of this, when we get them, I mean, when we in a presentation, we'll, we'll, you know, before this, there were stories of it, oh, I think it's 15 feet or more deep to groundwater. And other people were saying, I think it's three feet.
Yeah.
So if we, if nothing else, if we find out that, well, in the places we looked, it was X, then we'll know something.
Right.
So if it was at three feet, then that would be valuable. Let's just, don't bother with trying to figure out if we put more water in, we don't need to know if it's, if we don't, we don't need to do that study if we know that it's three feet. So so I, I think this is, what, what was done was a good scope of work and logical and stuff. I'm, I think if it's, turns out there is, it's a it's still three to 15 feet in different places, then okay, I guess I'd want to know that. Or if it's 15 feet pretty much everywhere, then I guess I want to know that. So and I'd feel a lot better about spending more money to getting a, a, a real assessment of its capacity.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. I guess I brought it up because it seemed, it seemed to me it had fallen off the radar screen.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay, great. So we'll maybe have that at a future meeting that we can maybe have a joint presentation. We could go to a select board meeting and hear it all together. That would be good. Okay. Any other meetings with other boards? I did bring up the Aqueduct Trail at the Open Space Committee meeting this week, or I guess it was last week. Thinking that the Open Space Committee might want to partner with Planning Board on negotiating with the Gulf Course and you know, rope in SFTA and try to get that access from the, especially from the new developments on Coolidge Street and from Meadow Brook Road all the way down the Aqueduct to the Natick Line. Because it would really open up an opportunity for a place to walk for all of those new residents. And it would open up a way for any kids in that development, speaking of bikes to, you know, to bike to James, to the Laurel Farm Fields and
In Framing Gm in Boston.
Yeah. John, you always have a much broader view of it. And I, I, I take what I can get, you know, piece by piece. Anyway, the first piece, I was hoping the Open Space Committee would jump on and say, yeah, we want a partner. In fact, they didn't. They said, well, you know, that's not exactly our thing. I should say we were, the, the committee was split. Two of us said, yeah, let's, let's get together and do it. And the other two said, well, it's not really our, our wheelhouse. So anyway, it kind of remains where it was. I mean, I think somebody on planning board would probably have to spearhead the negotiations with the Gulf Course and make contact with MAPC and Natick and get that moving again.
Yeah.
Yeah. John, do you have any comments?
I'll let you know. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna delay a week or two.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm of course very interested and excited about that trail.
I know you are. So, you know, you, you have a good institutional memory on that. Also having been, you know, down that road and tried to get it started before. So we'll take that up another time. Just wanted you to know that the ball's back in our court. Okay, town planner report. Do you have anything more to add, Gino?
Just a couple of things, not, not really related to, to planning board activities, but the National Planning Conference was supposed to be in Boston this year. So unfortunately it's not being held there, but it is being held remotely this week. So I plan to attend as much of it as I can over the next three days. Second, the, I have a few vacation days that are going to expire at the end of June. So I'd like to take a week, the week following town meeting, which also overlaps with our next meeting, but I have no problem coming to the meeting. That's not, not an issue. That'll be easy to do. But I just won't be around during the day.
Okay. Well, good to know. That's the week after town meeting. Town meeting's on Saturday, the 15th.
Yes.
So it sounds like, you know, it's a time to regroup and we'll have a meeting then. We probably will have the 11 Farm Road hearing and possibly the, what, whatever they call it, Meadow Brook Acres definitive subdivision, if they come back by then. If not, will you leave a message? Like if they come back and say, we want an extension, you know, we have paperwork to do. You'll leave.
Oh, absolutely. I'll, I'll be in touch. I'll be checking email and all that, you know, I'm not going to be, I'm just going to be at the Cape and I'll just, it's not, it's not like I'm out of the country or anything.
Well, Gino, did you just say you're planning, you'd plan to attend?
Yes.
The 18th, the meeting? Yeah.
Really good to be on the Cape or just change your background?
Yeah, nobody will know where I really am. I did laugh the other day though. What the heck meeting was it? But I was, I was at town hall where, where it looks like I am now. And I had a Zoom meeting and I brought my, my iPad because I don't have capability in my office there. And so it, it came up on a, on my own Zoom account, which showed my family room as the background. So I'm in town hall and it's showing me at home. And when I'm at home, it shows me as town hall.
Okay, that's great. So I don't have anything else. Any, anyone else on the board or public have something to say? If not, I propose that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Chris?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So thank you everyone. See you.
All right.
Next week.
Good night, everyone.
Bye. Bye, everybody.